Good morning. It is Wednesday, February 21st, and welcome to the Committee of the Home meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Unfortunately, Councillor Shu sends his regrets. And do we have any additions to the agenda? Council announcements. Who has a council announcement? Mayor West.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to give a shout out to the folks at Bond Lake Public School today. I woke up bright and early and went to and walked to school with them today. And I do appreciate Councillor Davidson, despite the broken foot thing, still, you know, doing the walk to work thing with us. So thank you very much. It really is wonderful to see administrations like the one at that school, you know, trying to encourage kids and families to do the walk rather than, you know, taking single vehicle trips to school. And I had an opportunity to speak to both the principal and vice principal about that. And they are working really hard to make it a positive experience for kids to be able to walk to school. And I think I certainly am feeling very refreshed and excited and energetic now. You're going to have to kind of hold me down. It's not just the coffee today at council. And I think the kids probably are feeling the same as they've had that nice crisp walk to school this morning.
Thank you. And Regional Councillor Chan. My mistake. Anybody else with council announcements? Well, I have two. One is to let folks in Ward One and anywhere know that tomorrow night, Thursday evening, at the Oakridges Community Centre from 6 till 8 p.m., I'd like to invite everyone to come to the traffic information meeting and hear about what the city has planned. And I'd like to hear from you, as I think staff would, about issues with traffic and maybe some solutions. And also, I'd like to mark that today is World Thinking Day. It happens every year on February 22nd, and it celebrates the global guiding movement, meaning guides, sparks. And it's a chance for Girl Guides across Canada and around the world to join together and speak out on issues that affect girls. It's a celebration of 10 million girls on every February 22nd since 1926. And this year's theme is "Our World, Our Thriving Future" gives youth a global perspective on the environment, sustainability, gender equality, peace, and poverty. And I have very fond memories of being, at the time, they were called something else but Guides. And I want to publicly apologize to all my Guide leaders and volunteers because I was constantly, I invented timeout because I couldn't seem to be quiet long enough to do what I was told. But it taught me a lot about teamwork. And I want to encourage people to get involved in the Guide unit and thank you all the volunteers that make it possible. And Councillor Tui.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chair. Oh, I'm chair. So I have three announcements. The first one is I thank you for our councillor Scott Thompson. Last week, actually, we have a spring icing based on celebrations hosting the Tom Graham Centres. So there are lots of amateurs and also the hockey players join that Spring Festival celebration. It's great, fantastic events. Thank you for Scott Thompson's support for that. For this weekend, Saturday, we're going to have two events. The first one will be the Coates Night. It will be hosted every year. So we're going to have fundraising and charity events for the Blue Door, for the homeless people. So everyone from Committee One, join this one. Perfect. Welcome. It's a Saturday. And also, on this Saturday night, it's going to be have, in my community, we are hosting a music concert for the Sycamore Hospital foundations. I'm going to send out newsletters to everybody later as well, and you're welcome. There is no charge at all based on your own volunteers to donate anything to support the Sycamore Hospital. And the location will be in the St Mary's Church, between a section of Magdalen and Young Street. Everybody welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there are no other council announcements, next Acting Commissioner of Planning. Oh. I'm looking at the wrong color. Oh, sorry. Oh, thank you. Oh, there we are. Introduction of Emergency Time-Sensitive Matters. And we'd like to adopt the agenda. Do I have someone to? Thank you, Councillor Silivitz. Thank you, Councillor Chan. Oh, all those in favor. Thank you. That's unanimous. Disclosure. Oh, carried. Thank you. Disclosures of pecuniary interest and general nature thereof. I see none. Identification of items requiring separate discussion. Seeing none. Adoption of the remainder of agenda items. Councillor or Mayor West, Councillor Chan, all those in favor.
Madam Chair, before you vote on that, just for the benefit of the committee and the public, I'd recommend that committee in adopting those items not separated for discussion, specifically items 11.6 and 11.7. There was a typographic error in the bylaw number in the recommendations. In the agenda, it read 14675. I suggest the committee adopt the recommendations as 14676. So it's just a typographical correction.
Thank you. Do we need a motion for that?
I think it's understood in the motion to adopt with having said that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, sorry, just to confirm. The motion is automatically there to be pulled, right? Because there's a delegation.
Thank you, the Chair. So I will confirm then, for the benefit of the public, that yes, that item is held. But also items 11.2 to 11.5, those three items are automatically held because they're either members' motions or have presentations. So all other items would go on consent.
And so now we vote because we already, yes.
Yes.
All those in favor. Thank you. That's unanimous. That's passed. Next, or do we have any public hearings? Seeing none. Now, I believe I introduce the Acting Commissioner of Planning, who would like to make a few remarks before our two presentations.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to you in council. I just wanted to provide some opening remarks with respect to the two presentations that will be before the committee this morning. The first presentation will deal with the Development Application Fee Review, which was undertaken by Watson and Associates on behalf of the city. The purpose of the review was to determine the direct and indirect costs incurred as part of the city's development application review processes and to recommend changes to the city's existing fees that will reflect these costs, while making every effort to mitigate any impacts on the tax base. The second presentation will provide an update on staff's ongoing efforts to address the impacts imposed on the city through the enactment of Bills 109, 23, and 97 by the province. The legislative changes that we have been dealing with have had profound impacts on how the city delivers its services, which has resulted in the need for additional staffing resources, which will be considered this morning by yourselves. The additional positions being requested are to be accounted for through the revised application fees that will be presented in the first presentation, again, with making every effort to ensure that there are no impacts on the tax base. Sean Michael Stephen of Watson and Associates is here to present the findings of the Development Application Fee Review. And Deb Gianetta from the Development Planning Division will do the presentation related to the Bill 109, 23, and 97 update. With that, I'll turn it over to Sean Michael for the first presentation.
Thank you, and welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of council. The next slide, please. Just briefly on the scope of the fee review that was undertaken in terms of the development application fee reviews. It did encompass the planning application fees, building permit fees, as well as the engineering and infrastructure fees that are imposed by the city. As was mentioned, the overall objective of the fee review was to first understand what the full cost of service was in delivering these activities, before looking at fee recommendations to improve cost recovery levels across the city. So the objective for today is to provide an overview of the work plan and the process that went into developing the full cost of service and the fee recommendations that are being brought forward to council.
Excuse me, can you move the mic just right in front of you, please? Thank you so much.
Is that better? Okay. So next slide, please. So in terms of the legislation that allows the city to impose these fees, there's three separate pieces of legislation that we should be aware of. Section 69 of the Planning Act, Section 391 of the Municipal Act, and Section 7 of the Building Code Act. Section 69 of the Planning Act is the most prescriptive, and just spend a moment highlighting that as within the Planning Act. What it allows municipalities to do is to impose fees for the anticipated costs of processing each type of application. And so that's important to note because it speaks to anticipated costs. It speaks to the type of application, and it speaks to processing only. And so what municipalities are not able to do is to impose fees to recover costs that are planning-related, but not specifically related to processing applications. So for things like general policy development and defensive applications at the tribunal, these are not processing activities that are not recovered from development application fees. Also to note, within the Building Code Act, the legislation is a little bit more broad where it speaks to the anticipated costs of administering and enforcing the code overall. And so municipalities have some discretion to have some cross-substitution of their cost recovery between different types of building permits, and also allows municipalities to create building permit reserve funds for the future sustainable delivery of those services. And as well, within the different pieces of legislation, either directly or inferred, it does allow for the inclusion of not only the direct cost of service, but as well indirect costs of the organization in providing these development review activities. Next slide, please. So before looking at the process that we went through in assessing the full cost of service, firstly, in terms of the full cost definition, as I mentioned, including both direct and indirect costs. The direct costs include not only the resource cost of the individuals that are directly involved in the processing and review of the development applications, but as well as the other departmental direct costs for things like materials and supplies, as well as the capital asset replacement cost for the assets such as facility space that staff utilize in their roles. And then operating costs as well have been included in the full cost definition, or sorry, indirect costs, I should say, being the operating costs of staff that aren't directly involved within those processes, but provide an overhead and support role. So for example, areas like human resources, IT, general governance, finance, and so forth. Next slide, please. So in terms of assessing the full cost of service, we use what we call an activity-based costing methodology, which is illustrated in this diagram. And it really starts on the right-hand side of the illustration, looking at what we call user fee costing categories, being the different types of fees or even subtypes of fees that we assessed to understand how the involvement of staff differs depending on the type of application or subtype. And so that looked at not only the three broad groupings we see here on the screen in terms of the planning, engineering, and building functions, but as well as looking at the, starting with the type of fees that are currently imposed and breaking those down even further to understand differences between minor and major application types. For example, to understand where are the differences in the complexity of staff review or the processes that staff are involved in in these different development review activities. Then moving to the left from there, we then spent a fair bit of time with staff on was going through, looking at from across the organization, who is involved in these processes for each application or permit type, and recognizing that would be primarily the staff in the core development review functions in areas like development planning, infrastructure, engineering, and building, but also have some involvement from staff in other areas of the city as well who are involved in commenting on applications. We looked at the individual steps that are involved in each type of application, how much time each position would spend on those various steps by application type, and then making sure that we are quality testing those effort estimates to make sure that that level of service is one that can be delivered annually given the other activities that staff are involved in. So for example, as I mentioned earlier, making sure that positions that are heavily involved in planning policy are not being fully recovered through development application fees because they have a role in activities that are not recoverable through these fees. And as well, in looking at those anticipated processes or looking at those processes, what we also had regard for were the ongoing changes that staff are proceeding through, such as the review of the development processes that the planning department had undertaken. And then the left-hand side of the screen is just illustrating then the allocation of the indirect overhead and support functions based on a set of cost drivers, which were primarily using the share of budget or number of full-time equivalent staff positions by department to allocate those overhead costs to the various departments, which then flow into the costing categories based on staff's involvement. Next slide, please. So the annual cost of service across those three service areas totaled what, $18.5 million? When we look at how that breaks down by cost component, as you'd expect, the majority of those costs are for salary, wage, and benefits, given that these are costs associated primarily with staff's involvement in these activities. However, it's also notable, 23% of the cost being for that indirect overhead support involvement, about $4.3 million. And that 23% being within the range that we typically see in other GTA municipalities generally being between about 15% and 25% of the full cost of service. And then the other non-salary wage and benefit direct costs and capital costs represent about 5% of the total cost of service. And when looking at this $18.5 million, that equates to the annual involvement of about 106 full-time equivalent staff positions on these development review activities each year. Next slide, please. So in breaking down those costs a little bit further by the three main service areas, we can see that the infrastructure engineering fees represent $5.9 million, building permit review, about $6.8 million, and the review of planning applications, about $5.7 million. And on the right-hand side of the table, we have the modeled annual revenue. So what we mean by modeled revenue is when we look at the average annual application permit volumes and apply your current fees to those, what revenue would be produced? And so we can see across the three service areas, about $15.2 million, or about 82% of the full cost of service, resulting in about a $3.3 million shortfall annually. And when we look at that by a major service area, we can see the engineering, infrastructure fees are performing quite well, recovering about 98% of those costs. However, the building permit fees, a little less so. Had to go 84% cost recovery, but a $1.1 million shortfall. That $1.1 million shortfall currently being funded through the building permit reserve that has been established. Then the planning application fees recovering about 63% of those costs, but a $2.1 million shortfall. That $2 million shortfall being a tax-funded obligation at the moment. Next slide, please. So then, in terms of the fee recommendations that have been made and which are included in detail in the final report, the main objectives around looking at those fees was firstly to make sure that they were compliant and defensible with respect to the various pieces of legislation, as well looking at the competitiveness of those fees within the GTA. And so looking at those not only in terms of the individual fees and how those are imposed in the surrounding area, but as well as the total development fees that are imposed for sample developments, when we include other municipal fees like development charges, looking at the stakeholder interest and affordability of the fees, most notably with minor application and permit fees that would often be paid for by existing residents and businesses, and so wanting to make sure that those remain competitive, looking at industry best practices around changes in fee structures specifically, and as well for building permit fees and engineering and infrastructure fees, looking at the use of reserve funds as well for the sustainable delivery of those services. Next slide, please. So a couple of items just to highlight in terms of the fee recommendations. So firstly, with the planning application fees, what I wanted to highlight was that for certain application types, like site plan approval and zoning bylaw amendments, there was the inclusion of per-unit and per-square-meter fees to allow the fees that are imposed to move with the complexity and the size of developments to better align cost recovery with complexity of review, and as well as the introduction of maximum fees for subdivision applications to recognize that while costs do increase with the size and complexity of applications, that there is a point at which that is reached in terms of there no longer being an increase in costs. With the infrastructure and engineering fees, a couple of things to highlight here is in terms of the development, engineering, and inspection fees that are imposed for subdivision and site plan applications. Those fees are currently imposed on a uniform basis. Those are separated out to have separate subdivision and site plan fees to remove some of the inherent cost cross-substitution that was incurring between those application types so that there'll be better cost recovery as the city moves forward, especially into an environment where there might be less subdivision activity and more site plan activity to make sure that those fees are recovering other costs independently, and as well as to consolidate the engineering review and inspection fees for ease of administration. And then also to note that with Bill 109 and the removal of site plan approval for certain development types, a new fee was introduced to recover the engineering and infrastructure involvement on those developments where site plan approval would no longer be required. Next slide, please. And then lastly, in terms of building permit fees, so the, a couple of things to note with respect to the legislation that I referred to earlier is that the building permit fee recommendations have been made to not only recover the full cost of service, but also make sure that the reserve, there are contributions being made towards the Building Permit Reserve Fund to ensure the future sustainable delivery of that service and that there are funds in place to maintain that service capacity in the event of economic downturns when building permit revenue might decrease with decreased building activity. And so in that regard, the reserve fund strategy that has been developed is to provide contributions to the reserve fund to achieve a reserve fund multiple equal to one year's direct cost to provide for that future service delivery. Next slide, please. So with those, the fee recommendations that have been made, the impacts on the annual cost of service are shown in this table. And so we can see that under the current fees, again, the overall, about 82% cost recovery. With the recommended fees, we can see that the annual revenue would increase to $18.3 million, about a $3.1 million increase. And that would be moving the infrastructure, engineering, and building permit fees to full cost recovery levels. Planning application fees would be slightly below full cost recovery at 96%, but a $200,000 annual shortfall. That shortfall is generally related to minor application fees and heritage permits, where there was a desire to keep those slightly more competitive to, in that respect, and resulting in a slight under-recovery overall across the planning application fees. And as well to note that in addition to the anticipated $6.8 million for annual building permit fee revenue, there would also be about a $500,000 annual contribution to reserve fund for that future service sustainability. Next slide, please. So then what we wanted to look at, in addition to looking at the individual fees and how they compare to fees across the GTA and as well as specifically within York region, was to assess the impacts of these fee recommendations for certain sample development types within the city, as well as across the GTA. And doing that, again, not just for the planning, building, and engineering fees within the scope of this review, but understanding what are those impacts on the total cost of municipal development when we include development charges as well. And the reason we're including development charges in that overall impact assessment is to give that broader consideration of, with these fee increases, what does it actually do to the overall relative competitiveness of the city in comparison to other municipalities? And does that actually move the needle in terms of the overall cost of development in the city? And so what you'll see in the detailed graphs and included in the final report is that the city's position across the GTA remains unchanged with these fee recommendations continuing to be either at six or eight across the GTA. Next slide, please. So just go through one of those sample developments in a little bit more detail for you. And so here we can see for a 100-unit, single-attached subdivision development, the fees that would be imposed across the city and 20 other GTA municipalities. And what you can see in the light blue section of the largest part of the stacked bar are the development charges, while the planning, building, and engineering fees across the GTA represent a very small portion of the overall cost of development at the bottom part of the graph. And so what you'll see here is that the city's current position of eight across the GTA would remain unchanged with the recommended fee increases, not change that overall relative competitiveness of the fees. And on the next slide, you'll see the samples of the graphs that are included in detail in the final report. And just to highlight here, obviously, you can't see the detailed numbers here, but that the city's position in each case remains unchanged. And looking at other types of development to understand the differences when we look at a density of development or type of development. So for example, looking at a smaller 25-unit townhouse development, a larger 200-unit high-density development, a 10,000-square-meter industrial development, and a 20,000-square-meter office development. So each case, the relative position remaining unchanged. And even when looking at the 25-unit townhouse development, the overall fees would actually go down slightly because of the fee structure changes of the engineering fees, which might have an upward or downward impact on those engineering fees depending on the nature of the development. Next slide, please. So and lastly, and just in conclusion and to reiterate that the fee recommendations that have been made will increase overall annual revenue across the three service areas, while remaining within the ranges that are imposed across the GTA. In aggregate, there's about $3.6 million in additional fee revenue that would be anticipated annually based on average historical application volumes. And that would result in about a $2 million increase in the planning and engineering fee revenue annually, which would offset municipal tax support that's currently occurring for those services. And then for the building permit fee recommendations, about a $1.6 million increase in revenue, which would not have an offsetting municipal tax levy implication, but it would make sure that the Building Permit Reserve Fund does continue to be in a sustainable position and that there would be no future tax levy implications with that sustainable reserve fund. Next slide, please. Then the next steps in the process are for committee and council to consider and approve the recommendations in the staff report. And then the recommended fees would be implemented as of April 1st, 2024. And then that does, on the next slide, that does conclude the presentation. So I am available for any questions or discussions.
Thank you very much. Are we doing Q and A now? Okay, does anyone have any questions? I see none. Must be a great presentation. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, if just then a quick motion.
Oh, hang on.
Leave the presentation.
I'll move the motion.
Oh. Do I have a mover to receive this presentation?
Well, as a matter of fact, you do.
Oh, okay. And you are, thank you, Mayor West.
No, thank you. I just wanted to thank staff for the work that you've done. And Watson and Associates, thank you very much for your excellent presentation and all the work that you do on so many of our financial matters. This is an excellent initiative. I really am pleased to see us going into such detail on this because this is yet another example of where growth does need to pay for growth. And by doing a periodic update on our development charge, sorry, our fee structure with regard to development, we're making sure that the cost of developments is not being borne by taxpayers. And I think that's important. And I think that's important. I actually did have a question about, so why aren't we at a hundred percent recovery? And you've answered that question on a couple of minor things. So there's a very small residual on that. And I think that, you know, that makes perfect sense. I think it also means that we are competitive. I mean, we're very competitive. The other GTA municipalities, and I'm pleased to see that as well. So I think the other thing that I'm seeing here in this, and I guess this is in the next presentation, so I won't go too far into it here as well, but because of the work that we're doing on this, we're also able to increase our capacity in the planning department to also streamline process at no extra cost to the taxpayer. And I think that's really important. So I'm pleased about that. I thank you for the work and the detailed work that's gone into this. I think that this is something that we need to be doing a periodic check in because I suspect that the landscape, you know, changes over time and that we need to make sure that we are recovering as much as we possibly can towards a hundred percent on this. Just maybe one small question. The, so there's a slight deficit in the amount that we would be recovering based on these new fees, but there also is built into this a contribution to our reserve funds. And it included in that, is that correct?
Yeah, so there's a slight deficit with respect to planning applications. And so you, what you don't have the ability to do is to cross subsidize your planning recovery through other application fees. And so that deficit remained with building permit reviews specifically, there are contributions to that reserve fund built in. So that, that does have the capacity to fund services in the future. And so for building permit review in isolation, that it has that reserve fund and those contributions built in.
Okay. Without splitting the hair too much, what I'm hearing in that regard is that in actual fact, we are recovering plus or minus a very small amount, a hundred percent with, including that contribution.
Yes, overall, and I guess, you know, not to get too much in the weeds, but because the building permit reserve is a obligatory reserve, that those are hived off and can't be used to offset the shortfall in planning.
All right. All right. That's fine. Okay. Anyway, thanks very much. I'm happy to move the motion and get this implemented as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, Counselor Chan.
Just seeking clarification. So the motion, did it receive the report or actually for recommendation? Just to be clear.
At this juncture, it would just be to receive the presentation with thanks under our revised procedures. We'll deal with the report as a separate issue later in the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk, through Madam Chair, because I do have question when it comes down to vote on the recommendation. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I mean, support a motion to receive with many thanks.
Thank you. And if there are no other questions, although some favors of receiving this report. Did I say it right? Yep. And that's Janice. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Welcome.
Oh, motion carries. Thank you, my tutor. Next, we have a presentation from Deborah Gianetta, Acting Director Development Planning regarding provincial bills one oh nine, twenty-three and ninety-seven. Welcome and thank you.
Morning. I have to take it all the way down because, you know, blowing up just like the Okay. All right. So good morning, Madam Chair, members of public and members of council here today. This is a brief overview of staff report SRPBS twenty-four eleven, which is dealing with the status update on the implementation of bills one oh nine, twenty-three and ninety-seven. Next slide, please. So just by way of background, last July, council approved the recommendations of staff report SRPI twenty-three oh fifty-nine, which addressed the city's initial response to bills one oh nine, twenty-three and ninety-seven. And the report included a number of recommendations, among which were the establishment of a revised development application review process known as our CAP process, a number of revisions to the city's procedures and processes to accommodate the legislative changes, and a number of streamlining and improvement initiatives. This associated report on today's committee agenda provides an update on the city's progress on these initiatives, as well as a request for staffing resources to continue our work on these initiatives, address ongoing impacts of the legislative changes, and position the city to handle any future legislation changes that the province may decide to bring upon us. Next slide, please. So this chart is in the staff report, so I won't belabor it. But it just shows kind of a report card, if you will, on a number of the status on a number of the initiatives and improvements that the city has been undertaking. And they're primarily focused on the development application review processes. So as you can see, a number have been completed. A number of initiatives continue to be in progress or ongoing, and a number of those initiatives remain to be scheduled and are scheduled to be completed by Q four of twenty twenty-four. Noteworthy, I'd like to bring your attention to the fact that we're just finalizing the phase one implementation of the KPMG Development Services Review that the city had KPMG undertake on behalf of the city to kind of look at how we could do our development application review better. Approved capacity, given the legislative changes, show how we can do things better, if you will. Next slide, please. So I won't spend too much time because Sean Michael did an excellent presentation. But coincident with all the work that we've been doing, we also did the development application fee review undertaken by Watson. And like Sean Michael presented, it was a comprehensive review of the city's fees for services related to development applications, building permits and engineering review fees. And it recommends a new development fee structure that increases cost recovery of development planning applications from sixty-three to ninety-six percent, increases cost recovery of development engineering fees from ninety-eight to a hundred percent, and it increases cost recovery of building permit revenues from eighty-four to a hundred percent. And this is with the objective to reduce or eliminate reliance on the tax base so that development actually pays for development. Next slide, please. So this brings us to the resource staffing request. So as I mentioned, we've been very busy and making steady progress on a number of initiatives to respond to the legislative changes brought on by bills one oh nine, twenty-three and ninety-seven. And as part of those, part of that work, we've been doing an assessment across all city departments as to what we need in terms of staff resources to continue to support our response to bills one oh nine, twenty-three and ninety-seven, but also to equip the city to handle future legislative changes that may be forthcoming as of yesterday. So just to point out this, the seven staffing resources that we have identified across both development planning, policy planning, building services, finance and development engineering. These all have also been measured against the evaluation of the KPMG Development Services Review, and they do in fact align with many of the recommendations contained in that report. So as noted by Acting Commissioner Galanis, as well as Sean Michael, a number of the recommendations of the Watson Development Application Fee Review conclude that the proposed new fee structure and the increased revenues generated by the increases to fees for service are anticipated to offset the cost of the requested seven new staff resources with no tax impact. Next slide, please. Just to sum up, this, like I've mentioned in this presentation, the city has been making steady progress in response to the changes as a result of bills one oh nine, twenty-three and ninety-seven. Staff are committed to their continued work to implement the initiatives outlined in the report on today's agenda in order to fulfill its commitment to building homes faster. As noted, there are some additional staff resources needed across city departments in order to support the work that the city has initiated in response to the legislative changes. We've highlighted these particular resources outside of the twenty twenty-four budget to demonstrate the importance of these resources in order to ensure the city is able to successfully continue its work to respond to both the impact of existing and future legislative changes. As noted, the recommended revised fee structure as proposed by Watson's report, Development Application Fee Report, will offset the costs of the staff resources with no tax impact. Thank you. And if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. And could I please have someone move to accept this presentation? Regional Counselor Chan, thank you.
Yes, I'm, first of all, thank you to staff. We are expecting this coming. And I would like to move the motion to receive the presentation and with thanks. And in particular, I'm very comfortable to look at the last, maybe slide number seven, the last three words, no, or four words, no tax base impact. So on that basis, I'm happy to receive the presentation and maybe later on to adopt the recommendation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And next we have Counselor Tree.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a bunch of questions regarding this one. My first question being answered, how many new sources are required? Sounds like there are seven. The second one will, will be, what's the total budget? I was searching for the cost here. So do you have any high levels? How much money are you going to pay for the seven new resources? Half million, one million dollars per year or more?
Through you, Chair, to Counselor Tree. I will refer to the staff report twenty-four eleven. Each of the sections of the report actually have the cost. I haven't done a total for the accumulation of the seven costs, the seven positions, but each of the positions have an identified cost in the report, and we can provide that to you shortly.
Okay, maybe based on my summaries, maybe it's a lot half million. So that's the new cost. But also, how long the service will be conducted? Do we, are all those seven positions are full-time employee or contractors?
So five of the positions are new full-time positions, and two of the positions are actually currently filled by contract, and they'll be converted to full-time positions.
So so far now, we do have contractor working with those type of the services. And now we're going to convert them to the full-time. All the seven are FTE, right?
No. So five positions are brand new full-time positions that are not currently filled. Two of the positions in the building department are currently filled by contracts, and they are going to, they're proposed to be converted to full-time positions.
Okay. And my next question will be, where is the money come from? I saw this slide, which is the gentleman coming from Austin Associate mentioned. We're going to increase the budget or fees from development application, et cetera. Is this seven resources cost coming from that package?
Majority of the cost will be, is anticipated to be offset for the new positions from the increased revenues from the increased fees.
Okay. My last question is, since the request was asked by all the members here in July twenty twenty-three, and I'm a questions here. This seven new FTEs has been discussed before, or this is the fourth time? Because we do have budgeted meetings, we do have our infrastructure meetings from twenty twenty-three. We passed a certain our budget as well. For the seven FTEs, is that going to be part of the operation budget in twenty twenty-three we just passed around a few months ago? Or it's going to be a pure new additional cost, which is just appearing in a sudden to the council member here?
So through the, the cost of these positions would be on the twenty twenty-four operating budget, not the twenty twenty-three. And with respect to, sorry, what was the second part of your question?
I'm saying just for me, because I, I look at last December's budget. Maybe I did not read clearly. Do we, or is there any hiring resources already part of our previous support? Or just new coming up because of this new assessment? We really need seven new FTEs here.
I'm going to refer to Gigi to help with the finance questions.
Through Madam Chair to the counselor. So in the twenty twenty-three operating budget, these positions were not part of the approved budget. So when we deliver the twenty twenty-three budget at the time, what we said was we're still assessing the impact of Bill twenty-three, one oh nine, and all the legislative changes, and that we would come back to council and present a report, which is what you see today. And it identifies seven new FTEs that are required. So they're not part of the twenty twenty-three operating budget, but as the director, acting director has noted, it will be part of twenty twenty-four. And that we already have a funding source, which we saw through the previous report. These are to be funded by the revised fee structure.
Okay. Maybe my last question regarding to workload. I know we have Bill twenty-three and other bills here, which is going to be driven this type of the resource requirement. My next question will be, except those seven new FT working on the bill twenty-three, et cetera, based on here's, are they going to have additional load sharing from the current workload? I know our planning department is busy because we are current in being targeted for many, many different projects. Except that type of new requirement list here, are they going to share other duties as well? For example, maybe you have existing backlogs for two or three years. Can those new resources going to be working on separate tasks as well? Or just dedicated for this?
Through the chair to Counselor Tree. No. So the positions are not going to be solely working on Bill twenty, Bill one oh nine, twenty-three, ninety-seven initiatives. These are to, these position will augment our current complements in each of the divisions that are experiencing pressures as a result of accelerated timeframes associated with the legislative changes. So no longer where we had, you know, I say, longer periods to do review and assessments of applications, where the timelines have been compressed, for example. So additional resources are needed to help make sure that we are in a position to not refund development application fee reviews. It's also needed, these positions have been needed to establish new processes. So with the respect to the removal of the site plan approval, our site alteration permit program has to be augmented because now the applications that previously were reviewed under site plan approval go through a site alteration permit process. So now the volume in the site alteration permit process has increased substantially, and a new program needs to be established to make sure it's streamlined and efficient. So there's a various, various impacts, if you will, of these legislative changes that these new staff resources will help augment complement and equip, equip the city, quite frankly, for the future where, where volume of activity, you know, when the TOC applications finally do come in, and there's a lot more activity in the city, will be best equipped to handle that type of application volume as well.
Okay, perfect. Another concerns here, ask my concern to everybody here. If we pass this levy, because I think we have sixty-seven become ninety or one hundred, that's going to be a burden for the developers. In this case, if we pass motion here from a city perspective, is there any channel those developers might go to Ontario to pursue us or to asking for different? In that case, if we feel, I'm just saying, if we pass these resources and Ontario reject our motion whatever here. If we prove seven new FTEs and developer will not pay for the investment, we have desk here. So how we remit, does this happen? I'm assuming we be this order, right? The developer grave with our motion first, and then we approve FTE. That is my thought. Otherwise, we prove FTE, we don't have money. Is that going to be an issue or not? Just a question here. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Tree. And our final question, I think, is from Mayor West. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, I, I was going to say something, but I think it's been said by Ms. Lee and Ms. Janetta. I just want to be clear, this staff report, it is ten pages of glorious detail. And there's, first of all, I want to be clear on this. This is, we're doing this in response to a number of pieces of legislation that the province has imposed upon us. Bill twenty-three, one ninety-seven, and what's the other one again?
One oh nine.
I lose track. I lose track after a while. But the point is, we're doing this because of those bills. But when I'm reading this report, I also recognize very much that because of those bills and those extra pressures, and including the pressures that we already have in the planning department, this is a way of us being able to resource the planning department in a way that will help us to be more efficient, to get applications through more quickly, more efficiently, which is what everybody is looking for, and what we're obligated to do based on the, you know, the growth targets that we have approved. And, and all, at the end of the day, for a net cost to the taxpayer of zero, because the costs will be recovered from the application fees of various kinds. So I think that that's the part here that I find truly amazing, that the, the staff has been able to streamline the process and make it cost less to the taxpayer all in one fell swoop, and respond to legislation, which frankly is very, very close to impossible, and we're, we're still doing it. I guess what I would like to see is an acknowledgement of the fact that we're doing yeoman's work here in Richmond Hill, doing the part that we can play in getting the houses built and getting the affordable houses built that we need to build, but we still aren't pouring the foundations, we're not swinging the hammer, and we're not building the houses themselves. So I think this is yet another indication that even with a challenging situation that we're being put in with these pieces of legislation, our staff is hitting it out of the park, and we're doing what we can do. So I think, you know, I have nothing but thanks for the staff right now coming up with a very creative, efficient, and frankly, affordable solution to make us all in a much better position than we might have been otherwise. So thank you very much for that, and I'm happy to, to see this report here on the agenda today.
Thank you. Next is regional councillor DePaula.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I just have one question about how this is going to play out overall. I understand, I understand what's being requested here. I understand the need for it, and I do think it is, you know, it is positive that we should theoretically be streamlining our process and making this, our, our process is improved here in Richmond Hill. But I'm just saying, just looking at overall, we've, we're, the province's reduced development charges to incentivize more building, more homes faster, and these, these three pieces of legislation essentially are trying to get, to provide an incentive for more homes to be built. And then we're, in doing so, they, they've put a cost on the municipalities, and we're, we're increasing our fees to cover that cost. And I, I don't disagree with doing that, but overall, someone who comes now to apply to build in Richmond Hill, are they still getting any incentive overall? Is, is there still a lower total charge? With the development charges, the application fee, is the total charge maybe going down a little bit? So that, that the initial intention of having an incentive to build is satisfied? And if it's not, it's not, it's not our fault. I'm just curious.
I'm going to refer that question to Director Lee.
Through Madam Chair, so I think in the previous presentation, we did show the graphs where we had indicated that with the fees, along with the CCs that are being proposed for council's adoption in March, that the rates are still very competitive, and that they are still well within the range in terms of competitiveness for the developers.
Good, that's it. Thank you. Thanks for that. Okay.
Thank you very much. No one has any more questions? I, oh, councillor Thompson.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. I do want to follow up on regional councillor, regional local councillor DePaula's, trying to, to understand the incentive side. And if, and maybe you could clarify, going back to the previous presentation, I believe the range was set between 15 and 25%, if I remember hearing that correctly. And, but I believe what I saw in those graphs is we were already sitting at 23%. Am I correct or incorrect on that?
Sorry councillor Thompson, can you be a little bit more specific so I can get Sean Michael to help respond to your?
So in your most recent response, you're saying that you look at the graphs, and we were within the range of the other municipalities. And if I'm not mistaken, what was said during the presentation is that range was between 15 and 25%. And we, if I'm not mistaken, we, we were sitting at 23%.
So I think, just trying to clarify, so the, the 23% was referring to the share of the total costs that were indirect costs, when that reference to 23% was made. So if you're asking about the graphs and the relative competitive position of the city in comparison to the other GTA municipalities, when we looked at those sample development types and the total development fees, including development charges, the city ranked between sixth and eighth across the GTA. And so that, that ranking remained unchanged with the, with these fee recommendations.
Yeah, that's, that's very helpful, and I appreciate that. Because that is sort of a concern that I'm looking at, is that we seem to have trouble getting the development industry to get shovels in the ground now. And, you know, I'm wondering how this may be seen by the development industry. We had two individuals that were here during the previous presentation. They, they left right after that presentation, so didn't get an opportunity to ask what their thoughts were. But I guess it's something, well, we'll have to see how the, how this plays out. But, you know, I, I, I thought I was looking at it, well, obviously, I was looking at it incorrectly in that I thought we were already sitting at a, a different level. So I, I think I'll reserve any more comments at this point, Madam Chair. I think I'll do some more work over the next week, and we'll wait until it comes forward again. Thank you.
Thank you. First round, I, I have a question. Thank you. Is there something you want to say?
Yeah, may I provide a response to that?
I think we're good. We're good. Or would you like to hear? Sure, go ahead.
Sure. We, we just did, that would be helpful to note that with respect to the comments about, you know, what stakeholders thought, it's just to highlight that we did have a, a specific consultation session with Bill to go through these impacts in detail, and no, no feedback or comments have been received.
Thank you very much. I have some questions first round. Thank you for the report. Can you explain in layman terms, are we not, because of these provincial bills that reduce development charges and have other implications financially for municipalities like Richmond Hill? Is this part of, in layman terms, that we're going to approach development and planning differently and make it faster and easier? We're doing things differently because of these bills so that things are approved at a different pace or a different step than they used to be? Have I got that right?
Yes, yes councillor Davidson. Through the, the number of initiatives that we've implemented since, I would say, July of last year, they were, they've all been intended on streamlining our, our approval process, getting things out, getting things out the door faster so that we can, as the city can achieve our objective of making, of meeting our targets where, where we can. So all of the initiatives, as you had seen, we had to, we've been digitizing, you know, making applications on, putting them online so that they're received faster. We made internal changes to our processes so that, you know, a lot of things are done upfront so that, you know, it takes the time off the total, total length of the development review process. So all of these things have been intended on getting applications done quicker, more efficient, and out the door faster.
Thank you. And, and am I correct in saying that the bills also represent possible fines if we don't do things faster?
That's correct, and that's what our new development review process has been developed on the basis of to make sure that we are meeting the timelines, but also not in a position that we have to issue refunds for not meeting the legislative timelines associated with these, the legislative changes.
Thank you. And, and what do you see happening if we don't hire these seven people? What would be the long-term effects in terms of red tape, or whatever you want to call it, and, and long-term costs if we don't add those folks to the staff now?
So I think that there's a couple of long-term implications. Our current complements are working at their capacity. So you face, you know, you end up facing with staff working at overcapacity in the various divisions. And it's not just the planning division, right? It's all the, all of the contributing divisions that contribute to development application review. For example, I know that the development engineering group has now been faced with, you know, an increased number of site alteration permits that they never faced before. And the complexity of those applications are coming through. So we need to ensure that in order to meet customer service expectations, just general expectations, aside from the legislative requirements, I think that we need to make sure that we're well-equipped to handle all of the future changes that have happened. I think that long-term, we face, you know, staff getting burned out, based on the current complements that we have. We're also becoming more sophisticated in what we do. And it now allows us to retain staff, more, you know, expertise. In the case of the, the project manager that I'm putting forward, the position that I'm putting forward, where we have large, large development areas, for example, South Hill Plaza and the KDA, the smart center site at Young and 16th KDA, these require expertise just beyond a senior planner that we currently, you know, the current complement that we have. So that it allows us to really focus our resources where they need to be more efficiently. Someone with a senior level, level of experience is dealing with these larger, multifaceted, complex, long-range redevelopment. So I would say to you that there are a lot of long-term implications if, should we not hire these resources now? We put ourselves in a position that we may not be able to continue to meet the expectations of our, our divisions.
Thank you. Just my own observation, I think, related to especially Bill, some of these bills is that it adds a stopwatch, and if we don't process things in a set timeframe, we are going to start losing fees, losing money. It's sort of a penalty for not doing things quickly. Is that correct?
Yes, and that's been the objective of many of the streamlining improvement, improvements that we have done, is to make sure that we are positioned, and our processes are positioned in such a way that we do not have to issue refunds, because we have met the timelines.
My last question is, would we have a review of the staff and make sure that the charges for fees are actually covering those, those staff, and that they're all, they're all necessary? Is there a, a review of staff numbers? How is it working? Is there a timeframe for that? Or can we make one? I take it if somebody isn't working, or you find this doesn't work, you review it and you make recommendations?
Correct. So in, you know, if we find that we're overstaffed, overstaffed, and the, the staff are not working at the capacity that we ought to be, and, you know, the, the numbers don't seem to work. You know, there are, there is an opportunity at a future time to take a look at what our staff complements are and make the changes as necessary.
Okay, thank you very much. I believe Mayor, oh, councillor, well, there's a second round. And Mayor West, go ahead.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I, I would just remind the committee that right now we are at questions and answers on the presentations. And it's been our practice that, you know, we're generally only having one round of questions because we actually deal with the report, where you can get into more questions and debate. So that, I would just encourage for meeting efficiency that we maintain that practice.
Okay, but there's a rebel rouser at the end of the table. We'll wait. So are we done with this discussion? Okay, thank you. Yes, yes. So we have a motion to accept this report. All those in favor, carried. Thank you. Thank you very. Next, we go to a delegation, and we have Olga Goldberg from Toronto regarding the member motion submitted by councillor Silvitz urging that a second national summit to combat antisemitism be convened. And she is electronics, so we welcome her.
Like now?
Yes, hi, thank you. Yes, welcome. Thank you. You're following. We can see you. You have five minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So I moved to Canada in the early 70s to escape antisemitism from the former Soviet Union. I was born in Kiev. For 50 years, things were kind of quiet, or so I thought. And following October the 7th, we have seen a tremendous uptake on the amount of antisemitism. And unfortunately, I got to experience it firsthand. I, I was invited by the Iranian community to come down to Queen's Park to celebrate the birthday of Cyrus the Great. We, I, I'm Jewish, and I greatly support the Iranian community because they have been allies. The event was cut short by the, by the Toronto Police Services telling us that they could no longer secure our security. And we saw a whole horde of pro-Hamas people coming up University Avenue. We were at Queen's Park, which is in Toronto, at Wellesley and University, and they were up, coming up college. I got a little closer in order to hear what they were saying. I was a very big distance away from this specific protest or rally. I was holding a photograph of a hostage. My daughter lives in Israel, and she's friends with one of the hostages, Mia Shem, who was being held hostage by Hamas. I was holding an eight-by-10 picture of her. I was swarmed, I was attacked, I was punched in the face. The photograph of Mia was grabbed out of my hands. It was ripped up. It was just a piece of paper. And I had a Canadian flag in my pocket, the size of my palm, that was ripped out of my pocket, and that too was stomped on. Very promptly, I was surrounded by the police. Whoever assaulted me escaped back into wherever they came from. And I'm just here to say that I'm a 56-year-old mom. I work at a bank. I'm, I'm a regular citizen, and I was punched on the street in downtown Toronto. I wasn't screaming anything. I wasn't waving an Israeli flag. I wasn't doing anything. I was standing on the street, very far away from a protest, and I was surrounded by a horde and attacked. I'm begging you, as, as people in power and who may have, you know, an ability to make change, and I hope you have the ability to make change. I filed, I filed a report with TPS. It is considered a hate crime. And I, this is not the Toronto that my parents brought me to. I'm devastated by what's, what's happening. And, you know, the fact that a 56-year-old woman can't stand on the sidewalk on a Sunday, Sunday afternoon at downtown Toronto is appalling. I'm, that's it. I, I don't have anything else to say. I, I really, I pray that you hear my message. And, and I'm just one person, but I, I think this is so wrong on so many levels. And, and please, please pass it on. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. We will be talking more about this motion. Take care.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to 11.2, that the development application fee review final report. We have further discussion? Nope. We'll move it? Okay. Mayor West moves it. All those in favor? Nope. Oh, does anyone have any questions? No. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Next, we go to 11.3. Oh, 11.5. Thank you. Status update on the implementation of Bills 103, 123, and 97, and request for staffing resources. Do we, does anyone like, Mayor West, yes?
Okay, I'll just finish up what I was going to say. So the, I, I just want to be clear on this. You know, all of the bills that we're talking about, that this- You know, all of the bills that we're talking about that this staff report responds to, basically in my mind, have two components, right? There's the component on what we can do as a municipality to streamline the development process. It's clear, and we've talked about this on council before, we need to build more housing in Richmond Hill and other parts of Ontario and Canada and beyond, and we need to build more houses that are affordable. So we are a municipality that's primary responsibility in this regard is to approve development and allow it to proceed. And by the way, approve development that's appropriate and well-functioning and well-engineered and all that other stuff too, and compliant with the building code. I see Chief Building Officer Khan there. I don't want to not shout out to that, safety is important. And so we got to do all of that kind of stuff. And I think that this and many other efforts that the staff have put forward in response to that call to action have been done, and this is a really good example of that. You know, and having the additional resources that this staff report talks about to make sure that we're able to accomplish that goal is very important in that regard. Being able to do it at no cost to the taxpayer is also very important. Now, I mean, there's been a little bit of discussion on this during this time about, you know, the money has to come from somewhere and it's essentially going to be paid for through development applications and reviews and all that kind of stuff. But at the end of the day, that's growth paying for growth. And that's a principle that as mayor, I think is, you know, I'm seeing is more and more and more important because the tax base can't handle all the pressures that are on it right now, some of which are being downloaded from other levels of government and shouldn't be frankly. But also the whole idea that the growth of a community shouldn't add to the burden on the property tax base. So as was mentioned earlier, the building industry has been consulted in all of the work that we do. And I would like to think we have a pretty good partnership with them. And in this particular instance, Build has been consulted and did not provide a response in any negative or positive way. So, I mean, no news is good news, I suppose. So I think at the end of the day, I see this as a very important initiative to be able to do the work that we said that we would do. Now, we talked a little bit in this discussion about incentives. The incentive for us is to have a great community for them to build, to provide the infrastructure like subways, roads, sewers, all that kind of stuff. We're doing all of that in partnership with the region of York. And we've got now an application process that's more streamlined and more fair and all that kind of thing. The incentives that really are going to get the ball rolling though are not incentives that we are independently, without help from others, going to be able to produce. We're going to need incentives from other levels of government. We're going to need partnerships with the building industry. And if that doesn't happen, approving more applications is not going to help. That's the problem. Bill 23 right now doesn't provide the incentives that we need to get the ball rolling. The HAF funding that we received probably will be a positive step and we're working towards getting that implemented. But, you know, we, as most, I'm sure all members of council know, we're not on track this year to meet our housing targets. And that's despite the fact that we're doing the best that we can to make sure that our processes are streamlined, but we're not getting shovels in the ground because we don't own the shovels that we put in the ground. It's the building industry that does. So this, I think, is doing all that we can to get the work done that we need to get done. The rest is, we're going to be working with other stakeholders in this, but it is not within our direct responsibility. And I think that's the reason why I'm enthusiastic about seeing this report come, that we're able to produce a more efficient process, do all that we can do in this regard, and then the next step is to incentivize with other levels of government and the building industry to finally get the buildings built that need to be built. So I'm happy to move this and I'm happy to see this. And again, I want to thank staff for doing the work that they've done, frankly, in a very creative way that I think is, you know, looks like it's a very effective outcome.
Thank you. Next, we have regional local councillor Chan.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm in support of the motion. I'm persuaded and convinced that planning at this point in time do need all the resources to deal with, cope with, handle, and ensuring that all the planning process permitting system, we've been talking now not only at provincial government, by federal government, we are all municipalities have to do things quicker, faster, and hopefully stronger with more money from federal and provincial. So having said that, and I did comment on one of the presentation and the mayor moved a motion also mentioned about no tax base impact, which is good. And I'm inferring from my colleague's question afterwards is that we are now thinking the certainty of some of these bills may be around forever. The legislature in Queen's Park just come back yesterday, and a number of, oh, two days ago, oh, yes, actually, Monday was a family day holiday. A number of legislation that has been introduced was actually repealing, changing things that were passed a year or two ago. What I'm trying to say is that at the back of my mind, my concern is that the certainty of this impact, of the impact from these bills, if the base of the bills might shift, I don't know. I have no idea that might be the case, but there's a possibility. So if that shifts, then some of the, I won't call assumptions, are bases on which we're making, may have to be modified. So I'm wonder to the extent that it's possible, and I'm thinking, I don't want to call exit ramp, but I'll commit, or some kind of adaptive option, could it be considered through, Madam Chair, perhaps to staff or acting commissioner? Could all positions be considered as contract? So just in case, just in case, if a power that be, wherever it is, say, well, we have learned from this and we want to make some changes, and that might change the basis on which we're doing all this planning. So I know it's kind of what-if question, but would it be considered on a contract basis so we have more flexibility to employ it down the road? Through you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And councillor Adams, I believe you'd like to answer that one?
Yes, thank you. And through the chair to councillor Chan, I would highly recommend against going with the contract staff. The reason being that the job market right now is highly competitive. And if you go with contract staff, you don't get the best and the brightest. And if we're looking for people who are going to come in, raise the bar, and really help us move these initiatives forward, then I would not recommend going with contract staff.
All right, thank you. Yes, competition for talent is a worldwide issue. I do understand that. But I believe we actually did identify at least one, if not more, to be on contract. Is another case? Through you, Madam Chair.
Through you, Madam Chair. No, all the positions are FTE positions recommended. There are two current contract positions that would be converted over to full-time. They're already in place in the Building Services Division.
Thank you. I'm just raising that because I think it's fair to say it's no guarantee. Those bills have been cited, 23, 109, I believe, 97, would be the same necessary all these years. But as I said in my beginning, I'm persuaded we didn't need resources to deal with the situation and the pressure we're under now. Thank you. No more question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And councillor Tweet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just continue my remaining question regarding to the budget. So money is so important. Without income, without revenue, in time, if you hire a permanent employee, we need to find out money. Because basically, the principle's here. My concern is here because for CPI this year, 2024, it's getting better. A lot of banks, including our central bank, is mentioning maybe in April, the tax, the interest might be lowered down a little bit. Hopefully, from June of this year, the tax increase can be lowered down. So this is going to be benefits to developer a little bit. From my concern is that we increased the fee. If, I don't know the current situation, how many developers put their shovels on the ground? This is a concern. Is there any way we can hold a little bit to look at the development status? So we know if in the pipeline we have seen more and more shovels on the ground, this way we can get the money. And then we put our contractors or FTE in there because we do have that kind of trend we can project. But now, we're passing a motion hiring our resources, but end of the year, we don't have that remedy come into our pocket. It's going to be a problem for us because FTE is not easy to let them go, right? It's not like contractor, we see the reduce of the workload and budgeting, we have flexibilities. If end of the year, that development fee we expected is not that enough, what is our backup plan? That is my concern.
Acting Commissioner Galinas.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to go back to Sean Michael's presentation. The basis of the study that was done, the fee review and the positions are based on that additional revenue coming in. That looked at past trends in terms of application, which included COVID trends and some of the down years that we've had. So all the fee revenues that are to be generated are based on the averages that we've had in the past. I think that's really all that we can rely on at this time. The additional positions that we will require should be covered off. I wish I had a crystal ball and tell you that it would happen for sure, but we are very confident and the work by Watson and Associates really covers off other municipalities who've gone through and are going through similar situations at this time. So this is our best, putting our best foot forward to try to address all the changes that have been put on the municipality and that will allow us to move forward well in the future. We will monitor the situation as we move along, as Deborah said, and we will do our best to make sure that there are no ongoing issues. If we have to tweak, we will, but the proof will be in the pudding as we move through the year. We are really early in the year and we know what our past trends are and we will rely on those.
Thank you. And I believe the city manager would also answer.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just to add to what acting commissioner Galinas has said, as we go through a process through attrition and vacancies, anytime we have vacancies within our organization, we evaluate those, we reassess them, we take a look at our operations at that current snapshot in time and ensure prior to any posting of a vacant position that we have what we require moving forward. So there is a process administratively already in place to evaluate, monitor, you know, and continue to realize our successes. I think staff have pretty clearly outlined in the staff report and in the conversation a very creative way that we have come up with administratively to put the positions in place that can get planning moving forward from where they are, which quite frankly is at maximum capacity and burnout. These positions will look after not only the legislative requirements that we have through the three bills and others yet to come. As councillor Chan has already said, those bills are changing sometimes on a weekly basis and new things are always being added. It sets us up for success in the future as well with everything else going in the planning department. Those staff will be integrated into all of the work required within planning and fully funded from alternative sources so there is no impact on our taxpayer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are those all the questions? Oh, councillor Thompson.
Thank you, sure you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'm not as concerned in regards to the process for FTEs. I mean, this appears to be the regular process that we would use no matter what situation we're faced with. If we're trying to be prepared for type of work that we're going to do moving forward, this is a normal process from what I can see. So you have to base it on what you knew to be true at the time you do your assessment. So I'm not as concerned about saying, looking at it from, well, how can we guarantee that we'll have this work moving forward? Well, we can't. Nobody can do that in any of the positions that we have right across the city. So I applaud the work that's gone into this so far. I guess one question that I do have would be in regards to the potential for us not meeting targets and in moving forward, whether they actually challenge-